We'll call the committee the whole to order. I will first item up on our agenda tonight, we have a presentation from Housing and Human Services. And so I will turn it over to Mary Jane Van Cleve.
Thank you, Council President and Council members, Mary Jane Van Cleve, Equity Housing and Human Services. Thank you for letting us take the time to give you an update. I have with me two of my colleagues from my department, and we will be taking turns presenting. We just wanted to provide an update on where we are with the extra funding that we did receive from council, and we thank you very much. This is our general fund, our COVID relief, and we also will be covering HB 1590. This is a slide that was provided at council retreat, and just a reminder again of the added support that we did receive in 2022. The gray area, the restricted sales tax, is actually also known as HB 1590 funding. That's okay. Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. And we're just going to provide, I'm Lori Fleming, I'm our somewhat new human services coordinator. And so I, a lot of the funding that you give, I take it to an application process and then, you know, hand it out, I guess, to agencies. So we're going to kind of go over what that process looks like. So the City of Renton is part of the Human Services Funder Collaborative. It's kind of a way that there's of the 16 kind of bigger cities in King County. We've come together and we have have a joint application. It's the same application that all 16 of us cities use. And so agencies then go and use that application and then the cities. And it's all done online, so it's quite simple with using a process called Share One app that's managed by the City of Redmond. And it's a much simpler process years and years ago before this joint application was, is each of the 16 cities had their own application, their own deadlines, and agencies were just running around, you know, trying to meet deadlines, trying to, you know, fit all the applications. So it was quite a big undertaking for all 16 of us cities to take our own applications and, you know, put it into one application that we are all somewhat happy with. And we've been doing this for about over 15 years now, and it works very slick. We always get a lot of positive feedback from the agencies that it makes it much simpler for them to just go to one place when they have to apply to all these different cities. So the application is done every two years using this online portal called Share One. And so the agencies go in, fill out the application, and then there's, it was for this current cycle, it was due at the end of April. And then each of the cities go in and download those applications. And then they are reviewed by each of the city's Human Services Advisory Committee. And so Renton has a Human Services Advisory Committee, and they spent their whole summer reviewing all the applications for this next round. We had about 85 applications. And we met every other week all summer long, going through all the applications, and they had rating tools. And they have finally just come up with their funding recommendation, which we will be bringing to you next month. After those recommendations are approved by council, then we do a two-year contract with each of those agencies. And then during that two-year period, the agencies do invoice and report to us on a quarterly basis.
I just wanted to emphasize, so the data we pooled that we provided in this PowerPoint is from the data that is in that consortium. So we have our data as well as theirs. We haven't had a chance to fully aggregate all of it. We really wanted to focus on Renton, but there is an extensive amount. And in these reports, we were looking at quarterly for, there are narratives. And so there's a lot of amazing stories about the people being impacted and the work that the agencies are providing.
And the narratives have been quite helpful during COVID because then we were able to get a snapshot, what was happening with them. You know, we were finding out that they were having, you know, they had to close their doors, they were trying to set up Zoom meetings. We were finding out their staff was quitting and they were short-staffed. So those narratives have been quite helpful, especially during the pandemic, to give us an idea like where we're at. So this slide is for this current cycle, for this year, these are the agencies that we fund. As you can see, there's a huge variety of agencies, and they provide a lot of different services. And to be clear, too, is people always ask, the contracts that we do with these agencies are for Renton residents only. So our funding goes to those agencies serving Renton residents. And that is one of the things that they actually report on, is how many Renton residents are they serving with our funding? So here's the big list. And the type of services that they provide is broken up into kind of six different priority areas. And those six priority areas, kind of the main reason for them is it does help to, in the application process, to divide the applications into like categories so that when you're looking at all like the basic needs, you're, you got them all kind of clumped together. So as you can see, those priority areas pretty much cover almost all the human services needs that we get in the city and that we need to, you know, help provide funding for.
They are, so all the service providers do provide metrics, but they measure them slightly different. They're called service units, and it is different on how they report. It's really fascinating, so it takes some time to comb through them. And as we go further, I definitely have to acknowledge and thank Erin Raymond, who works in economic development, who helped us. So our goal is to provide and continue to present as much data to council as possible, so immensely helpful.
Yeah, it's when they, when the agencies do their application, they have like dropdown boxes, like what are you going to provide? And so they can choose like a list this big of, we're doing council hours, we're doing bed nights, we're doing this and that. And so yes, Erin was phenomenal in, this is kind of like our first snapshot. We took all the agencies' reports and kind of conglomerated it. And so in 2021, of the agencies that we funded, this, these are the services that those agencies provided to Renton residents. There was about 7,400 Renton residents served, 7,200 hours of counseling, 14,000 bed nights, which includes like, a bed night is when somebody stays overnight in a shelter. And so that includes our domestic violence shelters, it includes some transitional housing that we have, and some youth housing. And not all those bed nights are actually from agencies that have those shelters in Renton. They're kind of like the domestic violence shelters in Kent, one of them's up in Kirkland. So, but it is again, Renton residents staying in those shelters. 60,000 meals provided and 8,000 miles of transportation, which is, most of that is from one of our agencies that has a shuttle van. You can call up and say, hey, I need to get to a medical appointment, I need to do this. And that's all the miles they traversed in 2021, helping our, you know, lower-income residents.
So now we're going to get into the demographics. So by pulling the data, we've been able to create some general, I would say, visualization. We know data isn't 100% in terms of how the participants basically have to select and they have to participate. So to make sure this is accurate, they do capture unknown, all human service providers do that to not skew the data. So this is what participants are basically providing us. I think for us, it was really interesting to see it. I mean, to me, 33% being children is hard to see that and not tug at your heartstrings because these families and children are going through a lot and experiencing some challenging moments in their life. Also, women are still disproportionately being affected. And so that kind of stood out to us. They're not the most visible, but they definitely are seeking services, and we are grateful to be able to provide the ones we have. But it's giving us some definite insight into who's in need. Race as well, 29% unknown, that's a large number. But for those who did select and provide, it still gives us good data on who we need to be reaching out to and understanding again who our community is. Our goal is to look at who we serve so we better understand who we're not serving. This one, actually, I was going to have Hannah speak to a little bit because it definitely shows, again, the 73% not experiencing homeless, but I'll let Hannah articulate this a bit more.
Yeah, so the slide here is showing Renton residents served by income and homelessness status. And you can see on the left-hand chart that about 50% of those who reported their income are categorized as extremely low income. That's the lowest income category that we have for our area median income, that's 30% and below. And just to contextualize that a little bit, this is somebody who works 35 hours a week, making $15 an hour and a household of two. That is somebody who would be considered 30% AMI. And so when we look over onto the right chart, I think, just to contextualize, although we're only 13% of those who are served identify as homelessness, excuse me, as homeless, we know that of those people who are extremely low income, many of them are at risk for homelessness. They are on an affordable rent to a household making 30% AMI, it's about $700. And I did a quick Google search and I couldn't find any apartments available in Renton for $700. So likely those families are paying more than they can afford, which means that when something happens, they have less to be able to combat that. So I just want to point that a lot of our recipients are at risk and that we're really providing those supportive stability net services.
Yeah, we just wanted to reaffirm with council that this is prevention. This is making sure folks don't fall through, and whatever we can do to support housing stability or other services is the intent. But that was that takeaway. This is the housing repair program. We mapped this for the first time. We wanted to illustrate to council that the program is serving the entire community, which is what we saw. It's fully mapped, our median age is 76, so this is definitely older adults. And again, this is to support housing stability. This is keeping seniors in their homes and helping them continue to have a safe and functioning home because there's limited resources once they're not able to stay in their home with restricted incomes or mobility or any other health challenges. So we were happy to see the widespread throughout the city. If you're looking at the two concentrated areas, those were Wonderland Park and, is it Vantage Glen?
Vantage Glen.
Vantage Glen. Those were former King County properties, but we do work with King County, so they do the major repairs, and we partner with them to do the minor repair. Gail Williams is here behind me, he's our manager for the division, and they really do phenomenal work. And there's lots of amazing stories of the staff who become very fond and very caring of the seniors who are in need and do, and definitely go above and beyond in helping them and connecting them to other resources in addition to doing these housing repairs.
And so with the pandemic, there was a kind of an influx of additional funding to the city that a lot of it went, some of it went to human services. And so the chart is showing kind of the biggest need that we heard and the biggest use of those kind of one-time-only COVID funds went to rental assistance. And so you can see that some other funding went to some food and other things, but the rental assistance was definitely by far what we heard from agencies and our residents that that's what they need assistance with. And we still have current contracts with rental assistance, so it is still available.
And a comment that was made there with the rental assistance is, you know, with employment fluctuating, people's health, fear of going to work, or childcare, whatever other disturbances there was, rentals assistance was huge, especially with the moratorium. There were still just challenges with making ends meet, and that's why staff put it there. If you see on allocated rental assistance, that was a reflection of agency capacity. Some agencies were also struggling with staffing levels and the ability to get all funds out. It's still earmarked and still will go to rental assistance, which will raise that number up above the 72%.
So the next fund source that we wanted to talk about is HB 1590. And this is a new funding source that the city authorized in 2020 and began to collect in 2021. It is a state or a local sales and tax use increase of 1/10th of 1% that could be used as a fund source for housing and mental and behavioral health services. And this is an ongoing fund source, so we anticipate collecting it into the future. And although it's based on actual sales and use tax revenue, we've been estimating about $3 million collected annually. And to date, we've stayed about on track and have collected about $6 million. So this is restricted for housing and behavioral health services. And the legislation does have some specific provisions related to use as well as target populations. So the funding must be used for households with income of less than 60% of the area median, and they have to be in specific population groups. So people with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, homeless or at risk of being homeless, and domestic violence survivors. And then in terms of use, there's really two buckets, this at least 60% bucket and no more than 40% bucket. The at least 60% bucket is to be used for construction, acquisition, or funding operations and maintenance of new mental health facilities, new behavioral health facilities, or new affordable housing. The rest, or the no more than 40%, can be used on services and programs for housing or housing-related services and mental and behavioral health. So I point out these buckets because it really does inform the way that we can and should use these funds. Because of the at least 60% bucket, we do have to plan for more than half of these funds to support new facilities and new capital projects. This also means that there's a trade-off between funding eligible programs now with the 40% bucket and having money to support future services at new facilities. So as our newly formed department, we are weighing these considerations as well as looking at available need assessments and working with our partners to think about emerging opportunities. We've done a couple of assessments, one specific to HB 1590, looking at needs related to homelessness and behavioral and mental health services. And we're currently working on a human services assessment that will have some recommendations for the use of these funds. We're also thinking about regional partners. Many of you probably saw the Seattle Times article today that just announced that King County is looking to increase the proper, levy a new property tax to help support mental and behavioral health. We also have the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. We know $3 million is not going to solve these big issues in Renton, and we want to make sure that we're aware of what our partners' plans are so we can leverage them and our dollars to be the most effective.
So, and I'll add to that. Our goal is to provide opportunities for councils review and support and approval versus spending money and then coming back and reporting out. So what we're trying to do is deeper dive into who we are serving now with our existing resources and funding so we can really get a gauge and then looking at what else is going on in the region because there's a lot of movement at the moment. And so our goal is to come back to you with a couple of options for HB 1590 and see if that continues to be the best, most suitable, and most viable option for our city. But right now, we're grateful that we have this massive opportunity, and our goal is to be strategic and thoughtful.
Thanks, Mary Jane. I think that's really well said, and we will be coming back with more information. But tonight, we did just want to plug and celebrate some of our near-term wins. So we have budgeted $300,000 a year to the Renton PD to support them with a navigator program that they're developing in partnership with FD Cares. And then we also have given an allocation to the Renton Housing Authority Sunset Gardens Project, $1.5 million in a capital grant to help support their 76-unit affordable housing project. And that project's going to be targeted half towards those making 30% AMI and less, and half towards those making below 50% AMI.
That's it for our presentation, council. We just wanted to thank you for the increased funding and the opportunity to be good stewards of those funds. There's many amazing anecdotal stories, again, from our agency providers. We'd be happy to package them. We don't want to say all of them, but I mean, there are success stories. We're certainly not saying we've solved the issues, but there are people benefiting. One story was a mother, a single mother, living in her car, had an eight-year-old, participated in one of our services that we funded, and she was able to get into stable and permanent housing. And so there are wins, it's just not we've won all of it. But we wanted you to know that there are a lot of amazing people receiving these funds and a lot of hard-working agencies that are helping us execute these services. So thank you, open to questions.
Thank you, Mary Jane, Hannah, and Lori. We'll go ahead and open up to questions and comments from council members. First up, I have Councilmember Holleran.
Thank you very much. This is definitely heartwarming. Are these individual instances of residents? So some of these individuals, individual residents, 14,000 individual bed nights?
Thank you, sorry, I'll start over. So on this slide, my question is, are these individual instances of service? Or are these like 1,400 beds, is that 1,400 individuals? Or are there repeats in here? Or can, like, what I would say, heavy users? I don't know if that's the right word.
Unduplicated versus duplicated?
Yeah. Yes, so the Renton residents, so each agency, what, how these numbers were received were, we get the reports from each of the agencies that we fund. And so Agency A says, we served so many unduplicated Renton residents. But that resident might have many needs. So if that's a food bank, they may have went to that food bank, but then they needed some counseling services here. So then Agency B served X number of unduplicated persons from their world. Because, so there is most likely definitely duplication in there if a certain person or many people go to multiple services. And same with the counseling hours, it's usually one person has multiple counseling hours. So it wouldn't be like 7,200 individuals. It might be, you know, half of that if each person was on a five-hour counseling plan or something like that. So definitely duplication in that. And same with the bed nights. Usually shelters, they, a person might stay four to five nights before they can get to like a more permanent type of housing. So definitely the bed nights is going to be that, you know, at least four or five nights per person. Meals, again, it's, they can come back to the food banks monthly, and so it's going to be multiple, you know, similar people coming each month. So yes.
And I would add to that, council member, is the HIPAA requirements. We would have to do a comparison from agency to agency, and we don't get that information. What we did try to get from this was a flat number of unduplicated per agency out of all 51 to get you those numbers. But we would not be privy to that information to see how many are exactly duplicates. We imagine some are definitely in higher need than others.
Yeah, so maybe I should clarify. The reason I was asking is because if one individual is accessing multiple services, it shows that we are surrounding them with care. And that's what I'm, that's what I was getting at, is it's not one point of contact. We're actually referring them out to someplace else and surrounding them with care. And that's, that's what I was trying to get at, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, great question, actually knocked off, one of, one of the ones I had off my list. So we'll go to Councilmember Alberson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So great presentation. I wanted to ask about the Police Navigator program as far as the HB 1590. I'm assuming that's, that's ongoing funding with the 1590. So thank you for confirming that. But my question is, you know, I know that 300,000, maybe that's the first pass. Any discussion on how and how much that might increase? Or is that anticipated to be kind of just steady until the program grows? Can you talk to that a little bit?
I think that's just the preliminary request from the police department. But I think as their need increases, we can absolutely, I mean, if it's shown success and need, they're still in the process of executing that contract with FD Cares. So I think we'd be more than happy to be, continue to discuss and work with finance as well because it's definitely a service we don't provide at the moment, and we're all anxious to see it happen. So not sure, sir, what that'll be going forward.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Rivera.
And thank you. My question is regards to Renton residents. We've served 7,400, but what parameters qualify someone to be considered a Renton resident?
Very good question. I think they designate that. Just also like with the, as she mentioned, the Red, or the Regional Homeless Authority, it's what the participants select. Absolutely. Am I right? Sorry, I had to check the lawyer.
Yeah, most, most agencies have like an intake form. And so whatever address, you know, that client puts down, we kind of take their word for it, and then the agencies tally up by cities.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Van, and I'll come back to Councilmember Perez, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much for the presentation and educating us on the grants. I wanted to ask, in terms of the 85 applications that were received this summer, how many of those are going to be recipients? Like, is there a range, or is it just, what are the requirements? Because I know that we tried to be equitable in terms of our rubric. And the last time that Human Services Committee presented a Cal, that was very informative. So I just wanted to know, what is the process for this particular year? And what is kind of the general range of recipients?
Yep, so we had about 85 applications. And with the extra funding that council is allocating for next year, we are able to fund 64 of those 85. And the other change we did is, it was usually like about 7,500 was kind of the minimum allocation. We'd heard from agencies that, and that amount hasn't really changed in a while. We upped that to the minimum award was 10,000. So that'll make a little bit extra for each of those agencies.
We have heard from agencies, or we're gathering the information, that their challenge is not always funding. They're having other sustainability issues, staffing, being able to pay, a lot of issues around digital equity during this time on being able to connect with their clients as well as their own staff, and just that transition. So they are going through some challenges, and hopefully we can move in a direction to also support them since they are such a crucial resource. So at minimum, it was increasing the amount, but we are learning a lot on their support needs as well.
Council President, can I do a follow-up question to that? For those that did not receive the grants, what's the next step for them?
So after the list of funding is recommended, we give notice, you know, of award or notice of you didn't, you know, receive an award letter to them. And they're free to, you know, contact us. We can offer other solutions of other funding possibilities. But usually it's, you kind of just get that letter that you did not get the award.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is just that I know that the last time the Human Services Committee presented, they were talking about equity in terms of the application itself, right? And so I think that oftentimes, even those who are doing the work in the community and nonprofits, the application itself is a hurdle, whether it's a digital issue or whether it's just actually fitting the, writing the description, just fulfilling what is in the box or what's been asked of them. And so I, I hope that we are doing more than just providing a notice. But perhaps, how can we bridge the gap of the next time that they do apply, there is technical assistance to the application and so forth?
There is.
I think there has been, but.
Yeah, and we can certainly continue to evolve and improve that. It sounds like there's also a two-day, once, there's, what is the two-day period where they open it up? Where they help with assisting, with applying? But yes, you're obviously working with a varying set of technical and grant-writing experience per the agency. So yes, we can certainly look at and see what we can do to support.
Yep, there was several, there was workshops, lots of technical assistance offered. Always can be better, but it, we felt there was, you know, quite a bit of outreach related to that. So we feel there was a lot of good assistance. And then even the City of Bellevue offered to take applications in non-English. If, you know, to help get over that barrier as well. They didn't receive any, but it was kind of out there, another kind of idea to try to make it open to more as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the great presentation. Mary Jane, you have been in this position less than a month. Mari Janyu has been in this position less than a month and you sound like a pro. You sound like you have been there forever. So congratulations. Thank you. Just to clarify, when you say that we provide services to all our residents, that mean that we don't deny services to absolutely anybody? Or do we decline services to some individuals for certain circumstances?
So most of the agencies serve more than just rent and. So any person who walks in the door, they're going to help them. It's just when they're getting the funding from different funders and cities, they do have to indicate how many of that city that they're applying or, you know, that they're serving. But it's open to everybody. And even like the agencies that we don't fund, they still serve rent and residents as well.
Mr. President, I have a follow up question.
Please.
I'm going to be a little bit more specific. The organizations that are providing services, they, they do not deny services to individuals, no matter their, whatever condition or status they have.
We don't believe so. What we only ask is for that tracking information on who they served. We don't know exactly. I'm sure their intake is based on capacity or things of that nature. I think that's why the Human Services Team has been doing it this way for so long, is to provide this wide spectrum of services to serve as many people as possible. But in terms of denial, we've not received any information on someone seeking services denied.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I didn't see it in the presentation, which made me think about it. Weather's starting to get colder. Are, do any of the agencies we fund help with energy assistance?
Really good question.
So yes, so Puget Sound Energy has a program in place. So if that's their provider, they need to contact Puget Sound Energy and get on their energy assistance. I believe they can get up to 50% off their rates doing that. Also, some of the agencies that we do fund provide energy assistance funding. So if you can't even make your payment, they will help provide financial assistance to you to make your payment.
Okay, thank you. I was just thinking about, because I know that there's weatherization funding. I know there's also, I think it's the La Heep Program that helps with the energy and then the Puget Sound, Puget Sound Energy Help Program. I just wasn't sure if any of the folks here did La Heep dollars, with our dollars.
I think they have, they do have rate assistance. I'm not exactly sure the source that allows that, but there is rate assistance.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're back at the top. I had Councilmember Halloran. It will probably, it looks like we might be going back in the same order.
And I will turn my speaker on this time. I just want to follow up on Councilmember Perez's question. Are any of these agencies asking about immigration status specifically?
You know, the ones, it's not a requirement on like their demographic form and agency and the client doesn't, as you saw, like on those charts, a lot of unknowns. That is the client not wanting to answer those questions. So they're not forced to answer any of it. Some may be collecting it if they have other funding or grant sources. We don't require that in our demographics. So, but I can't see what other funding sources might do.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to Councilmember Alberston and then Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make this quick. I'm going to switch gears a little bit. The Housing Repair Assistance Program, I, I like that. I guess my only, my, my one question is, how is that communicated? So that those individuals actually know that's available? I don't necessarily know right now. So I'm curious how that is communicated. So as many people know that's available as possible.
So a lot of it is word of mouth. We do have multiple brochures. A lot of seniors call. They get referred to the city. And it kind of is a little bit of a Plinko system sometimes by the time they make it. But our senior center, it used to be advertised when we did printed guides, any sort of digital guides. So we certainly, that population still does rely heavily on print. So wherever we can find places to provide it in print, we do. We're open if council has any recommendations on where else we can. It used to be part of the Rent Reporter, anything like that. But it's getting out, you know, clearly. And there's that, you know, it's spatially spread out through the city. But we'd be open and more than happy to look at how to increase. Sorry, guys, just whispering in the background. We do have a waiting list. So we are still working on that and figuring out where we can increase capacity.
And we do anytime we can, like the Senior Expo coming up, there's going to be a big stack of brochures there. And other city departments know about the program. So if, you know, Parks and Rec is holding something, they call us and we give them a big pile of brochures. But she's exactly right. They, a lot of them don't have computers. And so it really is getting that brochure out to as many places as we can. And we have it now in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and yeah, so it's.
So if I may, Mr. President. So I totally understand, understand that direct communication. I can imagine some of these individuals have offspring that do have computers and that sort of thing. So I'm just wondering, is there, you know, kind of that indirect, does your grandma need housing repair and that sort of thing? I'm, I'm wondering how much of that path is taken to, to increase that word of mouth from, you know, somebody who actually knows somebody who may not.
In terms of city communications, that's when we partner with them. We have done social media posts and booths and things like that. We do update the website quite frequently. So it's not a lack of awareness, it seems like. It's just building out capacity. But we rely quite heavily on the senior center because that's where I think a lot of referrals come through as well. And a lot of that is adult children researching resources for their older adult parents. But again, we're always open and happy to look at other avenues if there's ways we can get it out there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. My follow up, or my question is kind of a follow up of the 7,400 residents that we did serve. We obviously are a city of over 100,000 and obviously not everybody is in need of services. But do we know what percentage of our population is in need of services? And how that compares to the 7,400 that we did serve? Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. What's the proportionality to the rest of our community? So what we would like to do is come back to council and present on our census. We did one to the Equity Commission with Erin Raymond and myself and my team. We'd like to do that, to provide you that broader context. So now that you've seen who's receiving the services, how it relates to the proportion of our community and would love your feedback and, and direction on what you see when we present that data. But I don't know it off the top of my head, but we'd be happy to bring you that presentation.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Council President. I have a follow up question to Councilmember Alberston's question. So in terms of the waitlist that you mentioned, I guess how long is a waitlist? What is the process in that as well? Because I actually have heard, not just the, people are aware, but it's just trying to get through the system. And so I'm just trying to understand the process. And, and is it where we as council can support? Because again, it comes back to budget and capacity, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't want to be rude, but.
And how long will wait? Yeah.
Okay, the whisper is it's a two week turnaround time on applications in terms of them getting information and us doing an assessment or getting out to that home. I would say give us a moment to data dive, the way we're trying to do this, to talk about where expansion would make most sense. Just like the agencies, it's not necessarily more funding if we don't understand their capacity and capabilities. Just give us a moment. We'd love to come back to you on where that program could be expanded or approved upon. I'd hate to give you an answer and it's not the best one. So we'd like to do some research and come back to you, Councilmember.
Can I have a follow up to that?
Please.
Okay. So is there currently a waitlist?
Yes, ma'am.
Of how many people? We know.
Sorry. I, this is comical. 10 on the waitlist.
And so we are serving how many?
We don't have that, that data in front of us right now.
We've served about just under 100 individuals this year.
And that slide is a full completed year for 2021 for the Housing Repair Program. So you can see kind of on average where we're at. But we'd be happy to come back and be more in depth with you on that program in particular as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions, so I might hazard to ask one myself. And I, I think it's, it's been asked in different ways. So I'll kind of, I, I think I got the answer, but I'll, I'll more or less come back to it this way. I love the data that was presented and certainly seeing who we're serving. And then if I understood you correctly, there'll be, you'll be coming back with kind of the analysis to show where the gaps are. Because to me, that's what I'm most interested in to say, okay, this is everyone, everywhere we're hitting is great, but who are we missing in all this? And from what I understand, the Human Services Needs Assessment, is that willing to help us answer that question?
The Human Services Needs Assessment, so we just did phase one and that predominantly assessed the grant funding. So that's why we wanted to touch on that as well. The next phase, what we do is we're going to look at bridging the 2014 to the present day. And I think that may show you some of those gaps. And we're also going to be requesting some guidance and recommendations on 1590. And then in terms to Councilmember Vera's question, we'll be coming back and giving you a presentation on our city's data census. So we'll be coming back at different times, trying to give different views and perspectives. So council can give recommendations.
Okay. And then just on that timeline, will any of that be complete prior to this budget cycle being completed? Or is this, is this looking forward beyond that?
We certainly have that census data and we can present that, you know, whenever it's ready. The assessment, unfortunately, no, that won't be ready for this budget cycle.
And then I will look around. I'm not seeing, is there any? And we will need to move on to the next topic, actually, as I've just been reminded. So go ahead, quick question, then I'll close us out.
Okay. Thank you. A quick question. In terms of the quarterly reports, this is something that we've had. And so like, I'm, I'm just, I guess my question is, I don't want to use the word enforcement, but the, in terms of, you do get the reports and it's not, providers are not matching up to the requirements, right? What are the next steps to that? Because I, I know that while nonprofits overall are trying their best, I think that there are concerns in communities that there, there needs to be clear guidelines met, right? And, and those who have applied, who weren't able to get the grants and those who have applied, who are in the system or continually getting the grant. So I'm, I'm just kind of curious, what are the, the steps that we take?
So for the first, kind of first, second quarter, we're very lenient. You know, if they're kind of making progress to their service goals. You know, if they're not, if they're way behind, you know, we're kind of emailing or calling them, you know, what's going on. A lot of times the narrative might give some insight, you know, our person quit, we're trying to hire a new person, so we're not able to meet our counseling hours. So you kind of have a vision of what's going on. Then by third quarter, yeah, we, we are starting to like, kind of get a little more serious. Like, okay, you know, year's almost over and you're, you're only, you know, 25% of your service goals. What are you, what can we do to help? What do you need assistance with? That kind of thing. And it's, what's neat about it is a lot of the agencies, you know, other cities are also funding them. So we're kind of working together as a whole, what can we do to help them? And then by the end of the year, if they're way short, there has been times where they don't get their full funding. You know, they're given notice about it and that. With COVID, there were so many things going on. We, we didn't, we didn't necessarily do that because we knew there was just so much causing them not to meet their service goals. So we, you know, we're giving a lot of the agencies the funding just to keep them afloat, basically in some cases. But yeah, for the most part, we try to do reasonable, you know, service units that they, that they can meet. And it's actually not a problem.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. Great presentation again. I want to also thanks, thank, as the mentioned, members of the Human Services Advisor Committee. Once upon a time, I was one of those. And I do appreciate the hours they put into reviewing all those applications and providing the recommendations to us. So thank you. With that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is council policy and procedure 1800-13, which is the remote attendance at council meetings policy. And for that, I will turn it over to our city clerk, Jason Seth.
Hey, everybody. I'm not used to being on this side of the podium.
You could have stayed right there.
So back in March, at the council retreat, I was asked to update the council's policy on remote attendance at council meetings. The first reason was to basically try to align it with the Open Public Meetings Act. And the second reason was because I was provided direction to limit the number of times that a individual council member could attend to, to four per calendar year. And so just to give a little background, that policy was initially created back in 2015. And it was, it was basically set up to be, you know, for the council president or the council liaison to call somebody and say, hey, we need a quorum. The council members had kind of agreed ahead of time that they could be called upon if they were on vacation or something. And, and it was all done telephonically back then. In 2018, we revised it and we made it so that basically a council member could call ahead of time, usually pretty far ahead back then, like two hours, to give us staff time to prepare if they were, for whatever reason, wanted to attend telephonically but couldn't be here in person. And of course, in March of 2020, we, you know, COVID happened. That has caused us to create and to basically update all the equipment here in chambers. And so now, because of that, we host virtual and in-person meetings since June of this year for every meeting. And so even tonight, we have some people attending remotely. And the OPMA, Open Public Meetings Act, actually changed to allow councils and governing bodies to kind of make their own rules about how they want to attend council meetings, whether virtually or in person. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, this council, you, you all directed me to kind of rewrite the policy with the attorney's help. We rewrote the policy to essentially align it with the Open Public Meeting Act, Open Public Meeting Act, and to limit the number of times that an individual could attend remotely to four per calendar year. What I want to highlight too, in the policy, is that any time that a, somebody, a council president or the council liaison calls somebody and asks them to attend virtually, if they knew ahead of time they weren't going to be here, that will not count against the four times per year. And if there's any type of an emergency proclaimed either by the governor, the president, the mayor, or anybody else authorized to proclaim an emergency, that would make it difficult or illegal in some cases to attend in person. Then of course, those, those times wouldn't count also against that four. And so tonight's recommendation is to approve a committee report, a committee of the whole committee report, authorizing the adoption of a resolution to approve the new council policy. Or if there are requested changes to the policy, we ask that we're provided two weeks to make those changes and bring it back to council at a future council meeting. So any question?
I think I saw a few. Councilmember Perez, first.
Thank you. Just to clarify, you say that in case of an emergency, for example, in 2019? Let me see. No, 2020. We, as a president of the council, I got to cancel a meeting because of a snowstorm and nobody couldn't make it. At the time is that if you, you, Jason, live here during those days, you can make it here. We can have a meeting virtually with the equipment that we have. Will that meeting qualify as one of the four or because most of, no, okay.
It would not qualify. And, and I guess I should add too, that if a, if a council member had a difficult, you know, reason for having to attend virtually, it could be excused by the council and as, and not count as one of the four per year. But that would be up to the full council to determine.
Thank you.
The, yeah, sorry about that. The, the other point too, is that the way the current system is set up, I, I believe I could, we could hold a virtual meeting with, but it would not be broadcast. We would have to publish the meeting the next day. But in case of a snowstorm or something to that effect where we would all be stuck at home, but we could still technically hold a meeting and not have to cancel it.
Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, thank you. I just want to clarify that it's up to four remote attendances per council member per year before requiring preauthorization?
Yes.
So there, there is an, I don't want to call it an escape clause, but if, I mean, if you break your leg and you, you know, you, you simply can't come in and you've already done your four, you just call and you get preauthorization that yes, in fact, you can.
From the council president, yes.
President and liaison or president?
From the president. From the, well, the president would have the authority. The liaison is just more of a courtesy, so we know as staff that you're going to be attending virtually. And we changed the requirement, it used to be a two-hour notification. With the technology we have today, we're gonna have it on anyway, so it's a 15-minute request. So this is what it's currently written in the policy.
Councilmember Albert? Okay. Well, I, I gotta say, I, I like the four as council president, because that takes the burden pressure off of me. Y'all don't have to come asking me for the time off, it's like, there's four already. I'm a pretty forgiving guy, I don't know if, you know, the next council president maybe is forgiving, so I think the four is a good, a good policy, as we previously discussed at the retreat. But as, as you said, the rules really can change anytime, right? Like, this is, this is our rules, we're agreeing to.
It's your policy.
Correct. So this body, we're, we're just setting our own expectations, yes. Councilmember Perez.
Yeah, just a follow-up. The policy said that you have to get the authorization of a majority of the council, not just the council president.
Yeah, I meant as an indication, and then you would have to take a vote to approve the. Take a vote to excuse the virtual attendance, essentially.
How if you get the emergency an hour before you're gonna get the majority? The majority of the vote?
Wouldn't we just do it like we do when someone's absent, and we would just excuse them during the council meeting?
Right, we're not asking you to, obviously, to talk to everybody ahead of time.
Yeah, I think we would just excuse it at the council meeting.
But if you want to participate online, you can.
They can be there, but we just have to perform a.
Ah, excuse the, authorize.
Yeah.
You would have to authorize the virtual attendance, because the way the policy's currently, currently written, if it's not authorized, you, you can still watch the meeting, but you just don't participate in the meeting. So there are lots of different ways to navigate it.
And I'll ask the obvious question, Jason, the staff will help keep, help, help us keep track of all this.
Yes. We will, it'll be in the minutes, and so, and Judith and I will keep track, yes.
Okay.
Awesome.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions on this one?
No, no question. I will just say, when we talked about this at the retreat, I used the example of a council member in a different city who had a baby and then just never went back. And so I think the fact that we're limiting this to four is appropriate.
Totally agree. All right, thank you, Jason. And with that, we'll move on to our final item, which is emerging issues. And we have Doug Levy here with us remotely. And the emerging issue we wanted to talk about today, just to touch base, because there is a deadline coming up to apply for Sound Cities Association Regional Boards and Committees. We just wanted to make council members aware of that timeline, and then look to Doug for really any gaps. We have pretty good coverage, I think, throughout the, the county right now. But Doug, if, from your insight and doing your work, this is an opportunity really to discuss, where, where could we use some more seats at the table? Or for those of us who are currently on committees, obviously, I'm intending to reapply, where do we really need to maintain?
Yeah, thanks, Council President and Council Members. Good evening, everybody. I'll try and keep it brief. You have a memo from me in your packet. I agree with what President McCurbin said, that amongst you all, the council's doing a pretty, pretty good job covering some of the key committees. You do need to reapply most of the time, and I would suggest that all of those, all of you who are on regional boards and committees, go ahead and reapply or check with SCA if you're not sure, to, to be better safe than sorry. One of the things I did flag in the memo here is ultimately, it would be great if Renton had a seat on the Transportation Policy Board, but I think one of the things that gives you some coverage on the staff level is that your Transportation Director, Jim Seitz, serves on the Regional Project Evaluation Committee, and that's the staff group that vets all the transportation projects within the region in various funding categories and makes recommendations on up through TPB and, and the Executive Board ultimately, which Mayor Pavone sits on as a, as a statutory member of that board. So I'm mostly here to answer any questions you may have, especially with your limited time left in the meeting.
All right, do we have any questions?
Doug, on the, it's not here, but in the Board of Directors, incorrect me, Councilmember Prince, if I am not right, I assume that this is the last year that you're gonna be in the board? Or I don't know, that?
For SCA?
For SCA.
Yes, I, as past president, I term off at the end of the year.
I do believe that it's very important that we keep, Renton keeps the city in that Board of Directors. I am aware that the mayor has received phone calls asking him to participate. I hope that he gets appointed, but I will really not like to lose that position in that board as a city.
Can I give some background on that? Just as the person who's on the board right now. So what will happen at the, probably sometime in December, they'll have an election, and people will, they'll do it by caucus, thank you. And so all the people who are in the South, which is what Renton is in, will vote for, I'm trying to think right now, I think there are three seats that are up. My seat, Councilmember Quinn's, and Mayor Farrell's. So they'll vote for, no, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not Councilmember Quinn. It's my seat, Mayor of Covington and Mayor Farrell, Jeff Wagner. And so they'll do a vote, and they'll do a call for who wants to run for the board, and then they'll do a vote during that caucus meeting.
Yeah, I might just add, I think Councilmember Perez, I, I think it's a very well-made point, and I know the mayor's expressed that interest. It wasn't part of the regional boards and committees that are, that are up for nomination in this. Well-taken, and I would agree that it would be very helpful to see Renton have a continuing seat at the table on the SCA full board.
May I have a follow-up question, if nobody has a question?
Please.
No. I think we, we don't have, thank you for your memo, it was very well, very well, well, very well-written and very easy to digest. So according to your memo, we basically do not have any members in three regional committees. One is Domestic Violence, Healthier Here, and Regional Water Quality Committee. Do you recommend that any council member apply for this, or is not a significant, it's not that important for Renton to have a member in any of these? Of, of course, all the council members can apply if they want to be in that board, over that understanding, but would you emphasize that maybe it's important to have a person on any of those three, or no? Thank you.
I'd answer that two ways. I think if, if council members have an interest and they want to get their feet wet on, on regional boards and committees, I think it's always, it's always a good idea. So, you know, if any of you see those as issue areas of interest, you know, I would, I would never want to say no to our council members trying to dive in and get involved. If I were to name of those three where there might be some policy implications down the road, it might be on water qualities, where, you know, in long-term negotiations with, with King County on reclaimed water issues. So if I were to maybe look at one and see where there's perhaps some future policy nexus for Renton, that might be one of them.
Thank you. And I, just to add, yeah, I would totally agree, as far as the opportunity to make allies elsewhere, there's always opportunity with any board. So certainly, you know, anytime you have a seat at the table, it's great, for sure.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I, I will say, just from, so for years, I was on the SCA Nominating Committee for Boards and Commissions. And the one thing that I will say is, the earlier in your tenure that you try to get involved and you do it, the better off you are. And like, Regional Policy Committee and some of those other ones are really hard to get on. And so if you start out with a DVI or, or the Public Safety One, or the Left One, or where you can, where you're able to build up, and they can see that you show up to stuff and that you work and that, you know, you're gonna make the meetings, you're gonna take it seriously, then you're more likely to be put on other ones as the, as time goes on.
And I certainly want to, want to thank Councilmember Prince for his service in SCA over the years. I think, as we said, we have fairly good representation there, and I think that's a large, a, a big chunk of that, at least in current times, I would attribute to Councilmember Prince's effort and leadership for Sound Cities, so thank you for that.
And Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I'm just gonna add here that also over the years, we have council members like Marcy Palmer, and Rick Swicker, and even Greg Taylor, that we were deeply involved as Renton in every single board. We used to have a serious regional presence as a council. Marcy Palmer was 12 years on the, on the Regional Transportation. And, and I, I, I do remember having more than four or five council members at the time participating in regional board, so Renton has been well-known for having a strong presence.
Totally agree. All right, so I, I think, I think that probably wraps up, unless I'm seeing anyone else looking to jump in. Obviously, to the two council members who have not yet had the opportunity to apply, I hope you have all the information, if you're interested in any of those boards. And I'm sure, Doug, you'd be available for follow-up questions after the fact. And if there is nothing else further to discuss on this, I think that takes us to the end of the business for Committee of the Whole today. Oh, I apologize, I almost forgot, I do have a committee report to sign on the last agenda item. Jason wasn't gonna let me get out here with remembering that. So I didn't hear any objections to me signing this report, I planned to sign it and present it at council at 7:00 PM. So if nothing else further, we'll adjourn and reconvene as a full council at 7:00. Thank you.